I'd like to bring this month's meeting on the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to Order. First, are there any agenda changes?
Yes. Twenty-five seventeen Blair, twenty-twenty Tenth Avenue South, nine thirty-four McFerrin, and the designation of Ivy Hall on Shelton. And that will be heard at the June twentieth meeting. We're not certain of the location. It may be here again, it may be back at Sunny West, so I encourage everyone to double-check the agenda once it's posted, because obviously that'll have the correct location on it. And we also have a request to move four twenty-two Broadway to the end of the agenda.
Robert, can you say that one more time, please?
Sure.
So, deferred is twenty-five seventeen Blair, twenty-twenty Tenth Avenue South, nine thirty-four
McFerrin, and the designation of Ivy Hall on Shelton, and a request to move four twenty-two Broadway to the end of the agenda.
Okay. Any questions about the agenda? Motion to approve agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Really quick, too, although we have these big mics in front of us, these are just for recording, so I just want to let everybody know who speaks, even at the podium, that just to use your outside voice. All right. Are any council members here that I don't see? Just want to make sure, recognize them. Okay, seeing none. Approval of last month's meeting minutes?
Move approval?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under ten minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal, meaning eight minutes for your presentation and you can leave two minutes afterwards. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or a group, and they may have five minutes. Appeals to decision from the Historic Zoning Commission. Pursuant to the provision of section two point six eight point zero three of the Metropolitan Code of laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You're advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedure requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Next is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. On consent today, we have one oh six Lindsey Park Drive. It's an application for new construction of an infill. Just a note on this one, we don't typically put infill on consent, but the commission approved infill for this site last spring, and this new proposal is very similar in massing, so we just put it back on consent. Next, we have five nineteen Ackland Park Drive, new construction, infill and an outbuilding. This is a revision to a previously approved plan. Seven twenty McFerrin Avenue, new construction of an addition. Ten thirteen Clayton Avenue, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. Sixteen oh two Seventeenth Avenue South, new construction of an outbuilding. Fifteen fourteen Cedar Lane, new construction of an addition, including partial demolition. One forty-six Ensworth Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. And eleven oh five South Douglas Avenue, new construction of an addition. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding that the applications meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Okay. Any questions to staff about anything on the consent agenda? Okay. Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding anything regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, closed public hearing. We have a motion to accept.
I'll move.
Okay, you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next is overlay recommendations, which is the Roseau Parks.
I'm going to ask for a slide. Let's go to the next slide for the Frost Building. Councilman O'Connell requests the designation of historic landmark for one sixty-one Roseau Parks. This is the Frost Building, constructed in nineteen thirteen, and it's listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The building figures prominently in the history of Southern Baptist Convention, the largest Protestant denomination in the United States. Additional history and information is in your report, and obviously it's in the National Register nomination as well. The building is significant as an example of its style of architecture and retains its historic character and features. And since it is listed in the National Register, then it is eligible for historic landmarking. So, staff suggests the commission recommend to city council that the Frost Building be adopted as historic landmark and that the existing design guidelines for historic landmarks be used to guide future changes. And you did receive an email in support of the designation that was forwarded to you yesterday.
Any questions to staff about designation? Okay. Thanks. Robin, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Do I have any discussion or emotion?
We have approval of the designation. I want to see if Roseau Parks is a historic landmark overlay.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Sure. I'd just like to make a comment that it was so appropriate to make this recommendation for historic landmark because of the demolition of those other buildings that were owned by the same company. So, you know, as a board, it's just quite opportune to make this designation recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Previously deferred items, twenty-eight oh four Hawthorne Place.
There we go. Twenty-eight oh four Hawthorne Place is an application to construct a rear addition to a contributing minimal traditional style house. The addition is to be wider than the house, and that can be appropriate on a lot that is wide as this one, is sixty-five feet or sixty-eight feet wide at the front and expands to nearly double that at the rear of the lot.
One second, Sean. Do you mind? I know it kind of gets to the punchline, but just because you did send out information that it was, you guys did get further information and the approval was different than what we have in our staff reports.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just so everybody knows that.
So, everybody knows, we had sent out a recommendation for disapproval, and we typically do not accept revisions after recommendations are sent out, just because, or if somebody sends in drawings, we typically don't have time to review them. But this wasn't totally new. It was revision. Staff felt comfortable, and this was last week that we met with them, so we felt comfortable with the amount of time and familiar enough with the project that we felt comfortable to make a recommendation. So, following the recommendation that was sent to you and posted online, we reviewed a revision, and the punchline is that we recommend approval of the revised drawings that we received, and they were distributed to you earlier this week.
Just want to make sure everyone understood that, because our packet still says the disapproval.
And you're presenting on the revised drawings?
I have a couple slides of, but yes, mainly on the revised. Actually, I'll just skip through. This was the first one that was, this was what was deferred in April. This was what we reviewed earlier this month, and then it just tended to show the changes where they, the addition is still wider, but from the first to now, they broke up that, the length of that addition considerably. They changed the materials. This is the middle version where it's kind of getting there, but it still had a brick all the way to grade, and the second story wasn't as broken up as we would have hoped. And then this third version, it's broken up much more. There's a stone foundation. They took off some of the impertinences. There was a big retaining wall. Some other changes, there was a ridge raised. There still is ridge raised, but it's not as tall. So, essentially, the bottom line of it is that they did make the changes that we kind of had been suggesting, and then some. So, we're satisfied with this. And the materials and things, we'd recommend, or in the recommendation for disapproval before, we said that a lot of those things met the guidelines. The materials were appropriate, although, you know, preferably with the material change on the foundation. The window pattern is appropriate. The roof form was appropriate, but wanted a little bit more broken up. The only two issues really before were height and scale, and those have been changed with breaking up that upper story. Staff finds that the, actually, I'll go through the elevations. So, there's the front. You can see the addition is sort of staggered to break up the massing. The top is sort of a courtyard elevation. It really won't be visible from the street. The bottom drawing there is more visible, and that's what's been broken up. The floor plan, you see that the section to the right there is the historic house, and what's to the left is the addition. We think that although it's all broken up, there typically, we asked that if you separate, if you have an addition, that you separate it with an alcove between the old and the new. That's usually two feet deep. So, and that's only shown as one foot, so that's something that we still think could be one more step to further meeting the guidelines. So, staff recommends approval of the revised application with conditions that an alcove where the addition connects to the left side of the house should extend two feet before the addition gets wider. That staff shall approve the final details, dimensions, materials of windows and doors. That staff shall approve brick and stone samples. That clapboard siding shall be smooth faced, and that the materials of driveways, stoops, and walkways shall be approved, and that HVAC and other impertinences or utilities shall be located behind the house or on the side beyond the midpoint.
Okay. All right.
With those conditions, staff finds this meets the guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sean, any questions for Sean?
So, did, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
They state that the structure at twenty-eight oh four Hawthorne Place is non-contributing. Do you agree that it's non-contributing, or do you agree? I drove by there just before this. It looks like it fits right in the neighborhood of me.
Staff does believe it is contributing. We've sort of had that position from the start and gone back and forth with the applicants on it. They are, for the time being, accepting staff's determination, and have chosen to move ahead with keeping the house and adding on to it, but I guess they want the record to state that they still disagree. They're here. I'm sure they may have more, they could, I shouldn't speak for them. They can speak for themselves.
Well, I want to know how you feel.
Staff thinks it's contributing. It is minimal traditional. It's not typical of what people think of as Belmont Boulevard historic, but Belmont Boulevard was turn of the century into the teens, nineteen teens. This Hawthorne was platted later. It was part of the neighborhood that was platted as Belmont Terrace subdivision three or something like that, and it wasn't platted until like nineteen thirty-nine. So, but the area of Hawthorne, primrose, parts of cedar are historic unto themselves, or an area unto themselves. It's sort of a sub-district of the Belmont District large.
Thank you, Sean. Commissioner Stewart, were you able to see the drawings that he sent back, the revised drawings?
I'll recuse myself for this one, since I didn't hear the whole conversation.
If you studied the staff report and revised, were you able to do that?
I was able to do that.
Okay. But then, all we've had so far is the staff report, so you should, if there's no objection, you should be fine to do it, but I would if you missed the rest of it. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case, state your name and address?
Good afternoon. Nick Dryden with Dryden Architecture Design here in Nashville, eleven oh seven Crowthers Avenue. Thank you for being here this afternoon. Just want to also say thanks to staff for working on this. This has been kind of a long process, but I want to give a brief kind of timeline of us starting the project. We started working with our client, started with a plan that somewhat started in this direction, and then there was question, I think, within the team whether or not the house really was contributing, and we actually met with Robin and Tim on site to kind of just say, hey, what do you guys think? We don't really know if this really falls in that category or not. They did express that they did feel that it was contributing, and we continued to develop the plan. We kind of had a pausing point. We, just to kind of really do our due diligence to find out the history of the neighborhood and the context that this particular part of Belmont Hillsborough is within, because there are some kind of borderline structures that were, you know, built in the fifties, between the fifties and mid-fifties. But, you know, as defined by staff, they felt like the house is a minimal traditional example of a contributing structure. So, we kind of resumed our design process and kind of really embraced that and kind of took the approach that, well, we're going to really almost treat this as a preservation and really play off of the kind of minimal historic aesthetic of this house. And so, the idea of kind of honoring that rather than turning our back to it was really our approach. The other thing with the way that the house is configured, this is kind of an unusually shaped lot, just an irregular lot, as described by Sean. About sixty-eight feet at the front, at the street elevation, and then double that in the back, so it's kind of a pie-shaped lot. The site on the, if you're looking at the site, the site on the right with the kind of diagonal site property line is really consumed by utility easement, so it kind of renders a good part of that lot, which normally would be a wider lot would really afford you the ability to have some options with building to the side with an addition. The utility easement actually is kind of a no-build zone. So, there's a ten-foot utility easement, and then there's an additional NES clearance that's required for building proximity and clearances for line swing clearances. So, it renders a good bit of that extra wide lot unbuildable. So, the reason we kind of chose to kind of offset the addition to the left was so that we could really, you know, salvage some of the use of that extra yard or garden spaces, we're calling it. We kind of created a four-court garden, kind of a central courtyard garden, and then a rear garden as the site terraces down. The other challenge with this site is that there's roughly about a ten-foot fall between the front of the property and the rear, and kind of a tricky condition there at the alley. But it also sets itself very well for a garage to be integrated at the lower level, given the grade change, and also utilizing the driveway. So, we've removed this driveway that's in the front that currently leads from the front of the street of Hawthorne down the side of the property, and then we're utilizing the alley for the access of the garage, just tucking the garage in the front. There was some discussion about having another driveway on the right, and talking to staff, we've, they were not very supportive of that idea and some other impertinences. It's a new word that I learned in this process. So, we decided to kind of stick with a more minimal approach, again, focusing on the minimal traditional nature of the existing residents and playing off of that with the From that point, I guess we worked with staff back and forth several weeks and a few months, and we finally have gotten to the point where we are now, where I think we're all feeling good and agreement that the house meets the guidelines and that the massing has come to a place that everyone's comfortable with. And I think that collectively, I think we like it, we like where we landed because the house really, the current proposal actually helps highlight the current condition of the existing structure, and we're complementing it with some complimentary forms and masses with the two additions. Happy to answer any questions with my four and a half minutes left.
Any questions for Nick?
In the recommendation, there's apparently one foot. If there were a two-foot break there, would you just sort of slide the whole thing back a foot?
Yeah, I think we'll just, we'll widen that out to meet that. I think we've looked at that. That was, Sean came back with that in the recommendation and quickly looked at that, and I think we can easily achieve that. And in some ways, that'll kind of help create that hyphen or clearance from the existing house. It'll help clean up some detailing. We're actually, we're not, with the addition in that courtyard view, the courtyard elevation's probably the best elevation to see it, but in a lot of cases where you have two gabled roof forms meeting, we're actually, we're not connecting the gable form between the existing house and the addition so that we can see that gable at the front, so we don't have this funky cluster connection at the roof, so that they're distinguishable. So, we're doing that not only, you know, at that hyphen separation at the actual floor plan, but we're carrying that on up through the roof, so that there really is this kind of, staff often kind of describes that intention as if one day maybe the addition could be broken off and not impact the historic nature of the, the contributing nature of the historic structure. So, we kind of took that very literally in this case, where we carried that on up through the roof, where we're not gang clustering the two roofs together.
Okay.
So, it kind of lets the two structures breathe.
Any more questions? Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Open up for public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Any discussion or emotion?
I think they've done a good job, you know, kudos to staff for just, you know, continuing to work, and the applicant and Dryden Architecture for just continuing to work towards something that fits into the neighborhood and fits within the guidelines. And I like the, I like the step back. I like this view and the, I like what Nick just said, you know, letting them breathe into that space and just creating less of the mass that we weren't uncomfortable with the first time around. So, I think it's a nice revision.
Further to that, I would, the record already reflects that if this thing were sort of removed, you know, there's a lot of house behind the minimal traditional, which is a really tight, small, small structure that it is allowed to sort of exist on its own and that, you know, is oftentimes what we look for as opposed to the locomotive addition on the back. I use that more than a time or two. With that said, I'll move approval of twenty-eight oh four Hawthorne Place with the staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So, next to violations, first is twenty-four oh six Barton Avenue.
Twenty-four oh six Barton Avenue is, we've called it a violation because that's what we call things that deviate from their permits, but the background on this is that the commission approved a rear addition to this house in twenty-seventeen, in July of twenty-seventeen, and it was approved with a ridge, with an addition on the rear with a ridge that would go back and then step up one foot, four inches taller than the historic house, and the guidelines allow for additions to be taller in situations where it's necessary, like if the house is, you know, it's a very short house, or the lot slopes up and you kind of are forced to by grade. And it's with the condition that, or the requirement typically, that that addition begins forty feet back from the front of the house and that it's not terribly visible. And this, the taller addition on this one begins a little bit forward of forty feet. That's more like thirty-seven feet, I think I had, but it was only going up one foot, four inches, and it wasn't going to be that visible. And then in March, it was also approved, as you see on the top line there, the top image, the first floor of the addition was stepped down, one step, one step from the historic house, which helped kind of the addition to have a little bit more height than the historic house. And we discovered, we were notified by the applicant, actually, that during construction, they'd framed the first story without stepping it down, and, you know, they notified us of that, and we had some conversations with the architect and came up with a solution, an acceptable solution, and approved a revision that kept that floor level lot of the addition in line with the floor level of the historic house. But it made changes to the upper story. What had been a cross gable changed to shed dormers to sort of recapture some of the height that would have been lost inside, and instead of being one foot, four inches taller than the house, it was two feet taller than the house. And that was in March. Construction continued for a little while, and then end of last month, the applicant told us that they, again, something had gone off a little bit, and it was going to be two feet, eight inches taller at the ridge, and the part where it gets taller, the part where the roof gets taller is a little closer to the front than it had been approved. So, we went out and met with the applicants, again, or the builder, and tried to find some sort of solution with, you know, altering the hyphen connection in a way that would still meet the intent, you know, maybe trying to keep as much of it in place as possible. But ultimately, the applicant decided that how it had been framed was really how it needed to be, or to make any changes would be problematic. So, that's why we're here today. As I said, it's, we call it a violation because it's gotten deviated from the permit, and we certainly give credit to the applicant for coming to us and letting us know about the changes, but that doesn't change the fact that it has gotten away from the permit twice now, and the amount that the addition is taller than the historic house has doubled from where it started. It was one foot, four, and now it's two foot, eight. It gets taller closer to the front than it did before, and ultimately, staff felt that the, what has been built is less compatible and more visible, and not compatible. Here's a picture of the house now, a week or so ago, from across the street, in front of the adjacent house across the street. And this is from the sidewalk, right in front of the, you know, in the center of the house across the street. So, looking from the adjacent sidewalk, you can certainly see that, you know, the peak of the addition popping up two feet, eight inches taller than the roof of the historic house. And staff, you know, found that it was not a compatible addition. And staff recommends disapproval of this revision as it's been built to the addition to twenty-four oh six Barton Avenue, finding that the height and visibility are not compatible, that it does not meet section two B one A and two B one B of the design guidelines for additions to historic houses in the West, Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant would like to apply to keep it as is, and if that's not approved, staff would say that they could design and propose a revision and bring that to the commission next month, or they could go back to what was approved before.
Want to make sure, so is this the third iteration, or this is the second one, since the approved?
This is, this is the third.
The third, okay. That's what I was saying.
The first was what was approved in July. The second was what staff reviewed after the first deviation from the permit. And then, the architect wasn't involved sort of in the, since then. I think they've actually, were on vacation, so the builder and I met a few times, once or twice, and sort of worked up the drawings we had to be more like an as-built, but it, so that's where we are.
Okay. Any other questions for Sean?
Sean, the wall that is visible in the photographs, as-built, or the current construction photographs, is that true up with, it's hard. construction photographs, is that true up with, it's hard, hard to tell in three dimensions, photograph taken from, from some distance away. Does that true up with the drawings in terms of, I'm imagining what we're going to hear is how this is framed up and, and a lot of the discussion will center around that. Is that compliant with the drawings as originally submitted? I think that's a very detailed question to ask.
To be honest, I'm not 100% sure. I think normally if we get something that, that gets away from the approved plans, our first step is to get an as-built, to get, you know, to find out exactly what has been done. But since the architect wasn't around last week or so, we kind of had to just work with what was there. You know, it, yeah, it looks like the, that eve might be a little higher, but it's also not complete, so.
Just from the drawings, it, it might appear that way. It's hard to say at that distance, but I was just curious about that particular one. And it, again, it's also hard to tell from the drawings submitted sort of what that roof edge detail may have been intended in the drawings and then now how it might be. It looks like there's zero overhang. Certainly they could hang something on the side of it to give it some overhang and bring the roof down a little further. So it could be premature to talk specifically about that issue, but I imagine we're going to be getting this.
I know they were, I mean, they, they needed to get it wrapped up. It had rained a lot the last couple of weeks, so, you know, it, it was framed and they had to at least get some cover on it, so.
Sure, thank you.
They've not been following their normal work schedule. And the applicant is here. I'm sure they'll want to talk. And we have some pictures he submitted too, that I, I think I can get up on the screen.
As I understand, the staff recommendation and what I saw when I drove past was, it looks like in this photograph, basically, they could bring it into compliance by moving that peak 15, clipping that ridge going back 15 feet. Is that, is that correct?
Well, that was something that I suggested when I met the builder, but there's a, I guess, a hallway there. It's kind of like a catwalk between the existing attic and bedrooms that are in the back. And lowering that impacts the clearance and ceiling height of that, of that area inside. So that's why they would prefer not to do that.
Okay, any more questions for Sean?
Sean, can you go back to the fir, the first problem that they had or the first issue? What was that at the, at the base level or what?
So the, the top image there, the addition on the right, that floor level is dropped down as you, kind of, you're inside the historic house, you take a step down into the addition. And when that was framed with the floor not stepping down, it kind of dominoed issues. Then the, the ceiling was going to be different, so they kind of, you know, it, it just moved everything on up through the rest of those.
What are the ceiling heights?
I do not, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thanks Sean, appreciate it. The applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Brian Layton with Brick Development. My address is 1109 Glenwood Avenue. First of all, I just want to thank you, the commission, appreciate your time and service. Also want to thank Sean. As he stated, we did meet onsite multiple times and just appreciate his time trying to work through a solution. I did send a couple of pictures just to highlight a couple of things. I think that some questions were asked that this might clarify a couple of things. And then just a different perspective from what Sean had taken pictures of. So the first four pictures are, are similar to what Sean had pictures of, but just from the sidewalk in front of the house. Okay, I mean, you can just kind of slowly go through the first four because they're similar, just ones from the sidewalk in front of the house, ones from the street in front of the house, one's kind of the same perspective that he had. So just a few different shots. That, that's actually standing on the sidewalk in front of the house. I just wanted, you know, you to see, as you go back, you can obviously see the peak of the addition, but when you're standing on the sidewalk in front of the house, it's not visible. And then I, I had a couple of pictures, one of each side, each house on either side, just to show the height difference between the houses on either side, just to kind of give context. And then I've got, that, that's the hallway going into the addition upstairs with the rafters of, you know, the, the gable and the ridge there. And those are six, eight doors. So once the doors are set and trim is there, I mean, there's really minimal room for trim after six, eight doors go in. And that, that's really what's driving the difference between two foot versus two foot, eight. I mean, I, I wish we could have two feet, but it would require us to have either no casing on the doors or shorter than six, eight doors. And then I think I had two other pictures just of, you know, the clipped, the clipped gable is a difficult design to put an addition on. And obviously, we, we were working under, you know, the direction of staff kind of, of how to do it. I just wanted a couple of examples of another addition that was framed and built that the commission did approve a ridge raise on an actual clipped gable, which would significantly look different than ours. But I just wanted that as an example of something else that had been done. You know, really, all we're, all we're asking for is just a consideration to allow us to keep that extra eight inches just so that the, the doors upstairs work. If not, Sean, Sean did suggest an alternative. One of the other things, the reason that it's so far forward, that's really where we were able to support that ridge. If you go further back, then you're over that stairwell and kind of that catwalk and there's not, not a way to support the ridge. That's kind of what dictated where we framed it up as opposed to what Sean was suggesting a little bit further back. The only other thing that we didn't talk about, and I, I don't, I don't think this was a part of the recommendation, but there, there was one other change that we shed, we shed dormer out to get to that ridge raise, just to kind of tie it in a little different. And really, there was no usable headroom in the existing attic until we did that, the, the original design. And I appreciate Sean working with us on that, just to make, you know, that existing attic space at least functional space. It's, it's pretty low ceiling up there. I mean, it's, it's less than seven feet at one point, but at least it's, you know, some functional upstairs heating and cooling space. So that's all I have, thank you.
First, are there any questions for the applicant? Just, so we do appreciate you coming back. Was it just during it as you were, I guess I'm just, you know, three times the charm, you know, how did they, how did it get to be so many times, you know, are we, now we know that, and then we're still getting higher? And maybe it's just as you're working from the inside out, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Appreciate your working back and forth, but still, that, you know, why did it, you know, continue to happen, I guess?
Well, you know, the, obviously on historic houses, I mean, we, the architect measures a house before, you know, it's kind of torn apart, so they made some assumptions on, you know, what the heights were. And the, the reason for the step down really didn't have anything to do with upstairs. The reason for the step down was to get more ceiling height downstairs. So originally, it was going to be 10-foot ceilings, and now it's nine-foot ceilings downstairs. So the step down didn't, didn't really affect the upstairs situation. I mean, it just changed the height of the first floor ceilings. And now they're nine feet.
Okay, just wanted to ask that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an unclosed public hearing, discussion?
I guess my, as a general guideline thing is that it would be an exception to what we normally approve. And we're always very cautioned about things like that because then the next time somebody comes and says, "That was approved and it's now three foot or almost, you know, two eight." Applicant, I think you understand how we, this is very difficult for us because, you know, we're, we're, our purview is for guidelines and this would be an exception. And that's very cautionary. I'm going to have some other comments, but just for the first is that it's, it's not subordinate to the historical house. And although it does clear, you know, the historical house, because it's past the historical house, so that, there's a little bit of give there, but architects may have a little bit more on the knee wall and how, you know, this becomes a larger structure than it was, it was applied for. And now we're dealing with an exception.
I can appreciate the difficulties that you encounter during these projects, but there was an architectural plan on this that's been deviated from several times. The photographs you showed do show that from the immediate sidewalk. Had you gone down the hill, you wouldn't even be able to see the addition because of the vegetation and the other trees. Had you gone across the street though, you would have been able to see this pretty clearly. And the further you go up, the more you can see it. The, this street is really characterized by houses that have been very much cared for. Improvements have been appropriate and it's a wonderful street with people that care about it. We did get public comment on this. I'm not inclined to support the, the deviation on this one. And, and, and I'm, I'm more inclined to go with staff recommendation on this one.
Yeah, echoing Commissioner, Commissioners Bell and Stewart, I mean, as a, working for a builder, you know, I mean, we build to, to the architect's drawings and whether the architect, you know, might have made a mistake in some measurements. I mean, again, the staff and the commission can only approve what we see on the drawings as they're presented to us. And, you know, and that happened. And then, you know, field condition, you know, I mean, there really wasn't a reason in my mind that, that something came up, that, you know, there wasn't anything insurmountable that made the change happen. So mistakes, mistakes are not, I mean, you know, we're not out there just, just making it up in the field. I mean, you follow the drawings and in this case, that didn't happen. And I just, yeah, I mean, intentions are not, you know, this, this would be an exception. And I just think that we get that so much. And in this case, I, you know, I, I just think it's, it doesn't, it doesn't fit the, the historic house. So I'm also disinclined to approve it as it is. I mean, I know that's, it's been built, but it wasn't correct, so.
I think that's kind of my concern. It wasn't so much that, if there was an error, I'll let you know, and there was another error, you know, just to give, so anyways, that was kind of my concern. But wouldn't anyone like to craft a motion or is there any more discussions?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, with respect to 2406 Barton Avenue, I recommend this approval based upon staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, 305 Broadway.
We're always on vacation.
305 Broadway is a three-story brick commercial structure constructed around 1910. The property contributes to the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant is proposing a vertically oriented sign along the exposed western facade of the building where it be visible to eastbound traffic on Broadway. Signage along secondary elevations has been permitted. However, the design guidelines for Broadway did not anticipate or provide for vertical wall signage other than painted signs. A permit was recently issued for a vertical neon sign at 400 Broadway. You can see it there, it says Whiskey Row. In error, it was issued. Since this is the second such application to be submitted, and since the design guidelines did not provide specific guidance for this type of signage, staff is proposing a policy to govern such situations in the future. Here's the policy staff is proposing. If approved by the commission, it will be added to the guidelines as italicized language. I'll just read it into the record. So this is the draft vertically oriented wall signage policy for the Broadway District. First, appropriate location for wall signs is side elevations that are exposed party walls that historically connected to another building. Vertically oriented signage is not appropriate on front facades, rear or side facades that front an alley or street. Vertical wall signage should meet requirements for wall signage and not cover historic painted signage. Vertical wall signage should be considered within the total allotment with maximums of 15 feet in height and three feet in width, with the bottom of the signage at 12 feet from grade. Vertical signage shall not include flashing or chasing lights or moving elements. Neon signs should utilize raceways, painted the color of the building, if not used as background for the sign, in order to minimize holes in the building. So this current proposal meets the guidelines in that it does not extend above the windowsills of the top floor, it does not extend above the roofline or the parapet wall, and does not cover windows or architectural details. The materials are all appropriate and the illumination as proposed is appropriate as well. The sign projects a total of six inches from the wall, which is less than the three inches that are allowed. As proposed, the sign is only 10 feet from grade. Staff recommends that the bottom of the sign be moved up two feet so that it is 12 feet from grade. The sign is proposed to be 17 feet, six inches tall and five feet, six inches wide. The vertical signage policy recommends that such signs be no more than 15 feet tall and three feet wide. Staff recommends that the sign size be altered to meet these dimensions. The raceway, which is that strip that supports the letters, it's seen here in brown, can only be half the height of the letters that it supports. The two raceways on the larger letters meet this requirement, but on the smaller letters, the raceway height is more than half the height of the letters. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed vertical signage with the following conditions. The sign be altered in size so that it's a maximum of 15 feet high and three feet wide. The bottom of the sign be 12 feet from grade. The raceway height shall not exceed 50% of the height of the letters it supports. And the sign shall not have any moving parts or lights that blink, flash, chase, or that are sequential. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for signage in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Questions?
Before we hear from the applicant, as far as the policy, are we voting on that separately or is that something that's going to be just part of the next guidelines?
It depends on what your vote is tonight. So assuming you agree with all of that and then you voted on those conditions to meet that, then you're, then you're setting that precedent. You may disagree with that and you may throw it all out, you may change something, and then that would become the policy. So it just depends on what your vote is going to be.
And that will determine if we're going to accept the verbiage of the title. Okay.
My other question is on that one that was Whiskey Row that got approved. Do these proposed guidelines, does that Whiskey Row reflect, you know, so it's not different? Does that make sense?
Let me check my book. It's pretty, I think the width was the same and three feet. I got it just in case. I'm pretty sure it met all of the requirements.
It's in inches, which is not as helpful. Okay, so the width of that one is two feet, nine inches. The height is a little over 25 feet. So that one would be taller than what we're proposing, but width-wise, it would be okay.
So I guess I'm just not real comfortable with saying, okay, that was done. So now we're being asked to propose, which is great, okay, staff, because I think we do need to be directed in, in some fashion with that because it's a new thing. But then, does this italicize become, can it be revised if it doesn't, you know, it's, it's new? So how does it get proven to be the italicize that we follow from here on out, if, you know?
In the same way that all of your decisions do that, you know, with every decision, you're setting a precedent for all like situations. Not for every project, but for like situations. So in that way, it, it is information that guides us as to what you want to see and helps guide the applicant on how you're making decisions. And of course, that can change. You can change how you interpret the guidelines at any point. You don't want to go back and forth, but.
No.
You know, you can say, oh, we've seen this one now constructed, this addition, whatever it is, and, and find that it really doesn't meet the guidelines, so we're not going to allow that again.
There's really not that many of these party, are there? I mean, I was thinking, I was reading in the packet, I mean, I was trying to think about Broadway itself, like that aren't on an alley, like the party walls that were against a building and now are not.
I have a list.
Oh, okay, I just couldn't think of that many off the top of my head.
So 207 Broadway where Bootleggers is, this 305 Broadway, 317 Broadway, 125 Third Avenue South, 123 Second Avenue South, 114 Second Avenue South, 126 Second Avenue South, and possibly one other. So not, there are not that many properties where it would apply.
And then, but it has to fit, I mean, one of the italicizes was that it has to be in the overall allotment. So I mean, if you've already got all your frontal signs, then.
Well, different allotment for the side elevation.
Oh, yeah, okay. But is, oh, it's different, it's per wall. Gotcha.
Tell me something, what, why is blinking, flashing, chasing, and sequential lighting allowed on Broadway but not on the side?
The reason for. The reason for that is because Broadway was seen as unique. Uh, the entire downtown code area does not allow for those. Um, but you did decide that that could be appropriate on Broadway because it's a different atmosphere and it's a unique situation. So we are still trying to prevent that out, outside Broadway, but...
I, I, you know, I, I just have an issue with this building being on Broadway and having guidelines that don't confirm, conform to what we already allow on Broadway. Broadway, as you know, is, um, growing and, and there's, the entertainment area is growing exponentially at this point, and I understand a, a need to put brakes on it, but I also understand the economics of the buildings and the economics of, um, the entertainment area. And I just, I just feel like this is Broadway.
I don't believe they ask for...
Well, this particular applicant is not asking for any of that. Their illumination is all...
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the guidelines that you've got set for...
I understand, yep, and that's something you guys could discuss, but for this particular case.
So that's, that's, that's the only issue I have with the proposed, um, policy.
I agree with the proposed policy change, um, opposite from Commissioner respectively, but, um, they've got enough. It's enough flashing. I mean, I just, I think Broadway, the face of Broadway just should be in itself different. You know, whether the, the whole building is on Broadway or not, you know, the, the rear of the building isn't on Broadway, but the building addresses on Broadway. I mean, yes, it's adjacent to Broadway, yes, I mean, it's viewed from, but I think the face of Broadway is the face of Broadway and that is where it should be. That is where the difference should be, in my mind.
I have a question for staff related to that and related to signage in general. When the guidelines were, were written, you know, an individual address has a width and their signage was considered based on the width, you know, some of the lots are exceedingly narrow and, and signage is allotted based on frontage. And if you're fortunate enough to be in the environment to own a piece of property that now turns the corner, I would, I'm wondering aloud to staff, if you have a, a whole new facade that counts by this read of the guidelines, it hasn't been applied for, but it's someone we're so inclined, could you turn the corner and be on a different facade and put a blade sign right next to it? I, I feel like the original guidelines at least tried to contemplate this signage arms war where, you know, you'd have one and then the next and the next, and, and they're so close together that suddenly it becomes unseeable or such a hot mess that, that it's not achieving its effect and the signage, you know, is diminished, which, um, I think the guidelines and the understanding of signage on Broadway is that it's, we were discussing, it's a thing and that it's unique and to maintain that uniqueness is important. I'm curious about whether by writing this, well, no, we haven't seen it, but what would be a legal position or, or the staff's position on how, how it might change when you turn six inches around the corner and, and what that's gonna, what that's gonna look like. Um, that's not an argument for or against this sign, it's just a question that this isn't what we've contemplated in the signage guidelines. We're looking for some guidance, but the next thing we haven't contemplated quite yet, yet either. And I, I guess I would ask that, that question of this, um, situation or these seven situations. They may not all be alike, but certainly some acknowledgement be given because when you turn the corner, even if it's an empty lot, does that allow for a different facade signage? And then at some point, could it get covered up and, and, I'm, that's a curiosity for me in, in looking at this in particular and looking at these specific locations, especially on interior lots.
I'm not sure I fully understood the question.
And I've got several in there, I'm sure.
But there's a difference between a corner lot...
Of course.
And a lot that has an exposed side facade.
Mm-hmm.
Does that help?
Yes, there, there, I, I agree that there is. Have we thought through how this might influence either any, any and all of those situations in these guidelines?
And too, and I think with wall signs, there was real, and, and again, you were there to help write these. The thought was that a wall sign would be above a storefront. I don't know that, it was contemplated to put a huge wall sign on the side of a building. And that's where we kind of ran into a snag.
I agree. And we also tend to run into snags when one neighbor has a hell of a lot more signage than the next neighbor and then they, they, you know, it is literally that. It's, 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 um, how do you draw people into your business? I, I'm not against that, but at some point, what's, what's too much? Uh, and, and I, I don't know that we have to figure that out here today, but I, I do think some consideration to, um, the advantage. If you're on the corner, great, you're on the corner. I mean, corner lots tend to be more valuable from a retail perspective and in a commercial environment. Uh, and, and I wouldn't wanna make any guidelines punitive to, to somebody, but I certainly on an interior lot, um, this just seems like there's a bigger, bigger picture here or a bigger story perhaps.
I think I'll come with a recommendation. I even know, um, I think we, let's, let's listen to the applicant and hear about this.
I don't wanna interrupt, but if you have more questions for me, I know the applicant wants to speak and then discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna let him, just one, one second. But, and maybe we might decide to not just, we got the policy, but we'll, I know we're kicking that can to the bigger pile of cans, but maybe it's something we just need to look into with the whole signage and not necessarily tie it to this particular project, even though I know the guidelines were written around this approval, but still, we, everything we've really, all of our comments have been more about the policy than it has been about the specific applicant. So in fairness to the applicant as well, would you like to come forward and state your name and address?
If I click that around? That's fine, you can leave it right there. Um, good morning or afternoon, and I just wanna say thanks to Paul and also to Jenny. They've been great to work with. Um, we went down to this location in...
Just said your name and address.
Oh, it's Jim Rowan. And also to Robin. Sorry, I'm not a public speaking guy.
And your address, please.
Oh, of the building or my person?
Your address.
It's 3418 Pleasant Valley Drive here in Nashville, Davidson County resident. Um, and I have signed me up, same in my company. Um, this building is for Jason Aldean, uh, it's his bar, they're opening up down there. And in March of this year, I met with Paul and Jenny, I believe, later. I think it was the second meeting with her. Just to get, I, I'm just trying to do exactly what you guys are asking me to do. And if you look at, and I'm gonna try to do this, I'm gonna go back to the drawing. Well, not the right way. If you look at the drawing that's on the wall, if, if like a sign guy, I wanna put that thing all the way to the top of the building, but I didn't because the guideline said that you gotta be below the window sills. And I wanted to do, you know, you'd wanna go bigger, you always wanna do that. That's what sign guys do. But in this one, I met with them and these were the guidelines that are, were addressed. So I met those, every one of the guidelines that are in this for historic were met. I didn't do anything outside of that. This is 100% into it. Um, the, to answer your question, Ben, down the side of the building, we're allowed one foot for running foot of signage. Or down the front, we're, we're allowed a foot and a half. If we do a projection sign, we're allowed a foot, an additional .5 feet to that. So it gives you two feet down the front and one foot down the side. And that's to limit the size of the one on the side versus the one on the front. You're supposed to have a bigger one on the front. That's the idea behind it. And I have some thoughts on that, and I'd love to talk to you guys about the, maybe a revision of this just to address the concerns that people have here. But what I was doing here was exactly what I was asked to do. So that's why I'm asking for approval of it. But as far as this right here, um, the, the allotments are well within what should be allowed for it. It's well under, it was, I think they measured it out at 93 or 96 square feet, and I've got 140 feet deep. And I've also, on the front of the building, I have 180 square feet. So the way the ordinance or the way the, the, what they're asking to do, they said you can't exceed what's on the front, but you get the one foot down. So a lot of these buildings aren't that deep. A lot of buildings are 50 feet deep. For instance, that Whiskey Row, I did the Whiskey Row. So when we did Whiskey Row, it was 70 feet deep, so we only had 70 feet to work with. The building on the front was 56 feet wide, which gave them 112 square feet of allowable signage. But we couldn't go above the 70 because that's the maximum depth of that building. So that's how this thing kinda came in. So I'm just trying to do this and work downtown, and I know everybody's been downtown. You've seen how much construction's going on and how tough it is to get in and out of downtown. So we, that whole environment just moves really fast. So when, that's why I try to meet with historic first, find out what I can do, and then I go down and talk to my customer. And that's what I did in this situation. And I feel like here at the very end, we're kinda moving the goalposts on me. And I just wanna stick to what we got, and if we wanna make some adjustments, I'd love to sit down with Robin and her team and talk about some of the, maybe a way that we could adjust it, address some of those concerns about vertical signage that you guys didn't foresee.
Okay, um, any questions for the applicant?
Certainly, so as far as the, there's several different conditions that are, that the staff has recommended. Can you address those conditions? One of them was obviously the height of the sign.
It's not in there, it's not in the historic and it's not in Metro's code either. I could put that sign on the ground if I wanted to, but I'm not gonna do that downtown just for safety purposes. And also, if you see that, that building's eight feet tall and that sign on top of it's four feet. So it's actually sitting at about 12 feet. It's a little higher. Mike estimated it and, you know, uh, just, it didn't estimate height over it and it, it's, it's more than, he said at least 10 feet. So it's a little bit more than that. And I think they're requesting a smaller sign on the side of the building. But we've already, you know, like I said, it's already, it's one of these things where we're already, we're like knee-deep into this one, that I felt like I was following every, you know, every rule you asked. Matter of fact, I went down the whole list, I'm like, yeah, I did that, I did that. I started freaking out at first, but it, I truly did. If you read in the, uh, the, uh, the ordinance here that, that, on the overlay, I, I'm following every rule, I'm following every last one. But if, if we wanna change it, more than happy. You guys just point, point me in the right direction. If you tell me all we can do on that, it's a mural, I would do a mural. But then I'd go tell my customer, all we can do on the side is a mural. I, I just can't, you know, it's, I feel like I'm going out one way and then back another.
I think along through those notes, and maybe you about to, but, so are you saying that, um, you, um, the 15 feet is something that you are asking against the 15 feet? Or are you okay with that condition?
Oh, it's, it's, oh, it's, it's okay, yeah, that's fine, you're fine, we're, we're above that.
So the conditions that they've, um...
The only thing I'm not okay with is the size, because that's what I've already, I've already, uh, uh, met with customer on it, we've got...
So it's high, what is the size now?
What is the size?
Yeah.
Seven, it's 17 feet versus 15 feet. That's, it's a two-foot...
And what about the width?
The width is, um, they're, they're recommending three feet and we're, we're at five feet.
So you're five by 17 right now?
Five by 17.
As opposed to three by 15.
Correct.
And, and your understanding is that your allotment is within the guidelines?
It's 100% within the guidelines.
And is that correct, staff?
Uh, by our calculations, the frontage was 91 feet.
And this sign is just above 96 square feet, so just a little over.
Well, let, let me tell you what it's, what it says. This is what it says in here, and this is where I'm, and this is what I was told. Um, but it says you're allocated one foot of sign area for every linear foot of building facade. That's going down the side. Um, and it says to a maximum of the sign area permitted for the primary street frontage. That primary street frontage is permitted for 180 square feet. That's the maximum amount of signage permitted on the front. And it's not one foot down the front, it's a foot and a half. So even if I went with a minimum on the frontage, it would still be 136 square feet. But that's why I feel, I believe, that, because that's what I was told. That's how they calculated it. So we, the only thing is you can't go over, the side can't go over what the front was. But that's what it says there, it doesn't say that it's one foot on the front.
Could you tell me what you're planning on putting on the front as far as signage?
Oh, it's a set of channel letters just around the front.
But it's not on this, it's not on this application?
It's not on this. That was already approved.
Separate.
Yeah, this is not on this application.
Yeah.
Correct.
That was already approved. Set of neon channel letters, really simple. Looks great, too.
We're so happy to have you.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to be in Nashville.
I am still not clear, and please bear with me.
Yeah.
Um, so our, our, our purview that we have all pretty much right on is what's the allotment? And so if you're saying that you are within the allotment, but your measurements are different than the staff's measurements?
Our measurements are the same. The question is how you interpret...
The allotment.
The allotment.
And is it because of the side or the front? Please clarify.
It says build, hey, just read it and see if I can find it quickly.
I think this is a fairly simple question, but just to clarify that, you know...
I can read it.
Right, because we're, we're, we're not, we're, right now, what I understand, our board is not looking at the proposed design guideline in italicize. We're, we're thinking of that separately, correct? Right?
But it's, yeah, I can't, because, I mean, I feel like if we disapprove this, then it's kind of arbitrary if we don't have a, if we don't have some sort of proposed...
The applicant is by rights granted a certain amount of signage.
Yeah, so that's just...
Can I see within that?
That's what we, I think we're trying to...
I think this is, yes.
That's, it's just this fir, this, this one, yeah, this is...
So if he's within the allotment, then I would say I would approve the sign.
If he's within the allotment, then I'm...
So what, with this as a new thing, so the vertical sign, so the allotment was originally, I'm trying to think, like, what's, what's another side sign that's not this new vertical-type style? You know, like that we're thinking for allotment, like what, are there just not many of these or...
I keep on the first thought, can you just help us clarify my name or...
Yes, please. And then, then we can go from there.
Right. So I'm trying to find where, I know Jim just read it.
Is it in your report, Jenny?
What's that? There, yeah, well, the report states that we calculated it from the frontage of the building, which is 91 feet, linear feet.
You agree with that.
So that would permit you to have 91 square feet. What Jim is saying is he's using the measurement of the side facade of the building, which is longer.
I'm gonna read this, because it says this. This is, this is, this is, non, non, this is, it says other sign types, non-street-facing signs, non-street-facing building facades and alley frontages, which is what this is, not otherwise regulated, are allotted one square foot of sign area per linear foot of building facade. So that's 140 feet deep.
You're talking the side.
Then it says, yeah, then it says to a maximum, this is why I got goofed up and Paul straightened me out on it, because I just thought that was it, we get 140, we're done. But then it said to a maximum of the sign area permitted for the primary street frontage. Now, it didn't say to one square foot of the primary street frontage, it says to the maximum, and the maximum, whatever we get permitted, and what we got permitted was 180 square feet. So I'm way under, I mean, I'm way under. But the reason I'm way under, just like that, like I said, I'd go to the very top, all the way down to the very bottom. But met with them, told me what to do, I, I'm doing it, and I just think that's the fair way to do it. And if they want, if you wanna make the changes, Robin, everybody, I'll stick to it. Just show me what you got, and that's what I'll do.
The, tell me the side frontage of your alley.
It's 91 feet.
91?
And it's 91 feet by 140 feet deep.
140 is your, is your side frontage?
That's the side. Yeah, that.
So the discrepancy becomes how you interpret one linear foot of building facade. Is that the front, is that the side? We were interpreting it as the front.
The front.
Yeah, I got it.
But it's under the, under the category of side. That's the whole thing. Like this thing says it's under side facades. It's front facade is up here, this is side facade.
In the past, we thought, can we change this and maybe not?
But that you were interpreting that to mean the, um, that it's not beyond one square foot, I mean, one linear foot of the front.
When I think of facade, I think of front.
You're, it's, it's up to you how you wanna interpret, and we'll follow whatever you want. We thought we were following how it has been done in the past.
I want to get... Put Susan on the spot here. As it's written, this is a, seems to me a dramatical, perhaps a dramatical issue that we, we don't, we don't wanna, we like to keep you busy, but we don't wanna send you, we'd rather have you here than anywhere.
This is interesting. Um, it, it, it says on non-street-facing building facades and alley frontages, not otherwise regulated, are allocated one square foot of sign area per linear foot of building facade. That's the rule.
Yep.
One linear of building facade.
Correct. That's, that's the rule. But again, it's talking about non-street-facing building facades. So it's not necessarily the front facade that is being contemplated here. It's the side facade potentially that's being contemplated here.
But, but then the applicant said there was another sentence after that, right?
Right, so then it gives you under... Right. So then it gives you, under no circumstances can it exceed the maximum of the sign area permitted for the primary street frontage.
Okay.
So it's giving you a rule. But depending on what those measurements are, the dimensions of the building, the side versus the front, you could have a situ, a different kind of situation. So it's giving you a maximum, under no circumstances can it exceed that. So whatever, whatever your calculation is for allocated one square foot of sign area per one linear foot of building facade, again, I think it's talking about, here it looks like to me, it's talking about the non-street facing facade, because it's a separate section. Then, then you do that calculation, but it can't exceed the maximum of sign area permitted for the primary street frontage. And I think it's important that they, they designated street frontage versus facade versus non-street facing facade. It, it looks intentional to me. So whatever those calculations, I don't know how that, how that plays. But so that's a technical question, so I'll yield to the, to the staff for that part.
In that case, he's fine with allotment, because the front is allowed 1.5, but since he has a projecting sign, another 0.5, so he's allowed two times, which at 91 would be 182. So then at 96 square feet, he is well within the allotment.
Okay.
Our new proposed policy has size requirements that he would still be exceeding, but allotment-wise, yes, he will be fine, based on his interpretation. Sorry I was so confusing.
I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing, open up. So I appreciate, we're going to, in case we need to talk some more. But actually, I'm going to open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, just so we can finish our discussion. Is there any other questions to kind of clarify anything what Susan just said?
I don't, I'll, I'll say that I may have, I was present when we created this, which looks like a little, little, well, I don't know if it's a mess yet or not. But I think, I don't know that it was written around this specific situation, but as we were talking through this signage, and we considered, in particular, the Hard Rock location where there is a side entrance that really isn't street facing. I mean, it is, but it isn't. It's, it's on an interior lot, and they, I think, own or lease, have a long-term lease. It's not going to necessarily change that there was something contemplated to try to address what might happen on a really short front and a really long side. And I think in architectural language, you don't want the side to become more important than the front. The front needs to be the front. And I feel like, conceptually, that's how we generated, it sounds like that may be how we generated the, the language, and I think to the applicant's point, of further, kind of on the fly, producing the by right signage is, is something that we certainly can't take lightly. I, I think if this weren't approved, we certainly need to come up with some, some citation of guidelines that would cause it to be less than what's allowed by right. I don't know that we necessarily considered this application, but that's, we decided what we decided back then and made the guideline.
So in your comment, Commissioner, that, are we, are we in discussion right now?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
Is that with this particular application, then the intent that, that was original, is it with the intent, the sign right here?
I, I think as, as it's written, as long as this sign doesn't get larger than they'd be permitted on the, on the front, I would, I would think that it would be in compliance.
Okay.
Certainly with, my comments notwithstanding, I think counsel is who we need to listen to in terms of the interpretation of, regardless of what we intended, what's written and how that legally is going to come down is, is, is important for us to pay, more important than anything I might say for us to pay attention to in reaching that room.
No, just, are the proposed italicized language, whether we actually do anything on those today or not, was that in reaction to the fact that we hadn't seen, just, I mean, I know it was the vertical signs. Was it just that because they're just, they're vertical, but they're basically at the front? Is that the thought, was that the thought? Or is that a, I don't want to speak for you all, you know, but just was it because they're not spread out, you know, along the side facade? They're basically on the front facade, but on the side facade, you know, but visible from the front facade? Was that kind of the, because this is a new thing, this vertical nature?
All of that. Again, the thought was that with, historically, wall signs were above storefronts. And we just didn't think about a giant neon sign on the side of every building.
I just had an aha moment as well. Because sometimes if we, because I'm having a little bit of a struggle of, okay, we've got this, because there's a cause and effect, you know, I'm struggling with that. But I also think that in the way we process our information is that once somebody asks us for this, then somebody wants bigger. Somebody wants bigger, somebody wants bigger. So with this guideline that you're, that recommending, is it sort of gives it some limitations so that we're within, you know, reasonable, that it's not going to be huge one day, that it might go up that wall? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, I think most of our regulations, you know, as, they, they result in something that's happened, you know, and that's how, after we look at this case, that's why, okay, we need to maybe get some more clarification for it.
Okay.
I, and I, I would think we need to revisit, you know, I guess with the rest of the sign ordinance, this particular one. But I do feel like that based on legal's interpretation, it's pretty clear, based on that. Did you guys have anything else you want to add before? Okay.
So one of the thing, I actually appreciate the staff putting together the proposed guidelines. And I think they're really worthy of us considering. I don't know that today's the right day for us to do that. But I think taking that into consideration, putting something like that into place, I think it is, it does deal with the appropriateness and the scale of what those side walls should look like. So, so I support that. However, I think based on what we've heard from the applicant, from legal, and, and from staff, it seems to me that, I'll go ahead and throw out a motion just to see for discussion.
Can I finish up this thing quickly first?
Sure.
Sorry. But I just wanted to point out, we had one condition that was listed that was not a part of the new language. That was about the raceway height. That is in...
I'm going to do that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry.
Go zero.
So, so, so with respect to 305 Broadway, I move that we accept, that we approve this proposed vertical sign with the following conditions. Number one, that it not exceed five feet wide by 17 feet tall, that it, that the bottom of it be 12 feet off of the grade, and that the raceway heights shall not exceed 50% of the height of the letters it supports. And that sign not have any moving parts or lights that blink, flash, chase, or that are sequential.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And I guess we definitely know we need to revisit that policy.
Thank you very much.
The next is 3308 Windsor Avenue.
All right. Okay, so 3308 Windsor Avenue is a vacant lot in the Inglewood Place Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The application is to construct a single-family home on the lot. The plan before he meets the design guidelines for height and scale, setbacks in rhythm of spacing, orientation, known materials, roof form, and finessration pattern. As proposed, the infill is oriented to Windsor Avenue. There's no alley access available at this site, so vehicular access will be from a driveway that will extend to the, the rear of the infill. The front setback is proposed to line up with the front setback of the house at 3304 Windsor, which is the only house on this side of the street that faces Windsor Avenue. The infill be, will be one and a half stories. Staff finds that the height and scale are compatible with the historic houses in the surrounding area. And here are the side facades. And here are some context photos. On the top, you see 1132 Shelton Avenue, which is a contributing house located to the left of 3308 Windsor Avenue. On the bottom is 3304 Windsor Avenue, which is to the right of the site. It's a non-contributing house and not, not in the Inglewood Place Conservation Overlay. A couple more context photos. So here are photos of three infill developments across the street at Windsor and Shelton, which were approved by the commission last year. And then at the bottom, an infill house at 1132 Shelton, which is at the corner of Shelton and Windsor. That was also part of that development. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. One, that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of nearby historic houses, which will be verified by MHCC staff in the field. Two, staff approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of all windows and doors prior to purchase and installation. Three, staff approve the roof color and texture. Four, staff approve a brick sample. Five, staff approve the materials of the front and rear porch floors, steps and railings. And six, the HVAC be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. So with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets Section 3 of the Inglewood Place Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Handbook and Design Guidelines.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Melissa? The applicant like to come forward and state your case? Please give us your name and address.
Preston Quirk of Quirk Designs, 2931 Berry Hill Drive, Nashville. And pleased for the assistance of the staff in getting to a staff recommendation for this. And I really don't have anything to add, but I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thanks, Preston. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. CNA, closed public hearing. Do we have any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval based on staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 503 Buchanan Street.
503 Buchanan Street is an application for infill with an attached outbuilding on this vacant lot in Salem Town. The new residents will meet base setback requirements of five feet from the sides, 20 feet from the rear. The front setback is drawn at 17 feet 8 inches, which matches the nearest contributing building down the block. However, staff is recommending, confirming the appropriate front setback prior to construction as it's not indicated on the site plan. This is a two-story building with a ridge height 34 feet 9 inches, eve height 22 feet. The width is 34 feet. The height and width are similar to those approved recently in this district and meet the context of nearby buildings. However, the, in terms of the massing, staff reviews that the proposed side dormers add too much to the building's massing. The commission has approved two-story structures, as I mentioned, but you have not allowed that much massing above that. The hip roof is an appropriate roof form. However, the dormers and the sort of cutoff nature of the roof at the rear as drawn, staff has reviewed, do not meet Section 3A, B, or E for height, scale, and roof form. Therefore, staff recommends removal, wrong arrow, excuse me, removal of the dormers in order to complete the hip roof form to the rear. The proportion and rhythm openings are compatible with the design guidelines, but there is one long stretch marked here without an opening on the building's left side. This expanse, roughly 19 feet, should be broken up with a window or windows. Also, the front porch is only five feet deep. The guidelines require at least six feet deep, so that is another condition of our approval. There's the right side and the rear. In terms of the other sections, the proposed materials meet the design guidelines with staff approval of masonry, windows and doors, walkways and driveways, which were not indicated, location of HVAC and other utilities. The structure does include an attached garage. These are not a typical feature of this district. However, the garage is located at the rear of the building with access off the alley, and the lot is very short at about 99 feet. So for these reasons, staff finds the attached garage appropriate in this case. On the top are the left and right commercial building fronting Fifth Avenue.
Fifth, well, yes.
And then the, the other buildings across the street. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions, that the finished floor height is consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent historic structures. The front setback is consistent with the setbacks of the adjacent contributing homes to be verified by staff in the field. Removing the side dormers and massing of the roof form be reduced, and that the front porch be a minimum of six feet deep instead of five. That a window or windows are added to the left side. Staff approve masonry, roofing color, windows, doors, and driveways and walkways. And that the HVAC and utilities are located behind the house or on a side facade beyond the midpoint. With those conditions, staff finds that meets the Salem Town design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions from Paul? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I do have, Paul, I got a quick one. On the, the rear porch where the soldier, you know, we kind of got a soldier course, and there's a column, wood column that comes up to support something. That detail seems, it could be pulled off, but I think, you know, you're applying the ceiling right at the same elevation that you've got brick terminating there. Usually see some sort of rack in a more traditional detail there. It is on the back. I didn't know if there was a comment, any, any sort of concern on the staff's part about completing that, or if that were, would make for better condition, or it even needs to be discussed at all.
We hadn't addressed that, but Mr. Jenner's here to go over the design, if you like.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to please state your case, and please give us your name and address.
Yes, Will Jenner, Access Creative, 2610 Westwood Drive, Nashville, Tennessee, 37204. Thank you, Paul, for everything, and thanks to the commission. We're, we're pretty much in agreement with all of the conditions. The one we would like to reconsider is the dormers up top. I've got a few handouts, just showing some of the context. And we realize now that some of this might have been before the overlay, but there's a lot of three-story buildings in the close vicinity, and there's one with dormers showing on the side. We realize the massing may be a little large and want to consider if it could be reduced towards the back of the house, where it's not going to be really visible at all from the street. This lot is very narrow, like he, Paul had mentioned. And the owners, the owners of this house, you know, this is going to be their forever home, and would like to get, you know, the square footage they can out of it. And without the dormers up top, it just becomes a very small, you know, house with the, with the depth of a lot. So we'd like to kind of reconsider the one, the one line on the dormers at the top.
Okay. Ben, did you want to ask him your detailed question?
Oh, and I'm fine with the rack on that. That was just, not that awesome.
It was more, I guess, a curiosity and a thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems like something might, might want to happen there, just allow construction to be a little easier on your side.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
How you doing? I'm Robert Hollam. I'm the owner of the property. And me, my wife and I, Chris, he's forever home.
So you're part of the, you're the, you're part of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll give you the rest of the 10 minutes then. I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Yeah, you're good. Just wanted to let you know, you, you get more than two minutes to finish up.
No problem. Yes, and so it'd be in our forever home, and I'm the general manager at Crest Hondo, which is right downtown. So this is very close to my work, and I make life a lot easier myself and my wife if I forget something at home. So the dormers are important because, you know, we would like to have a family room at the top and a rooftop patio. And if you stand on my lot and look almost any direction, there's rooftop patios are around us. So I guess that would be, and then I was talking to Will, as you look at the home for the street, and I'm... As you look at the home for the street, and I'm not familiar with what the added massing really means, I don't know if it's looking at it from the street and seeing the dormers if it's an issue, but I talked to Will about maybe doing a different design where the dormers fade away, and we actually use roofing material. Here's historical, you know, applicable or approved roofing materials. So kind of that roof line kind of fades away into the skyline there. So just for those reasons, we'd like to ask you guys to reconsider, reconsider that one little piece.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, now, open public hearing. Would anybody else like to speak regarding this project? CNN closed public hearing, discussion. And I guess we can speak specifically about the dormers.
Mr. Chairman, as I look at the elevations, both the front and the sides, I do find that the dormers don't really reflect any kind of traditional dormer shape. There are no windows on them. And I don't, I didn't see a plan for the third floor in there, and I can't really evaluate from the information provided what that does. But I do think that it does give a non-traditional shape and falls outside the guidelines to have the type of elevation that we have here, both on the front and the sides.
Yeah, I appreciate both Will and the applicant, you know, wanting to work towards a solution. But what we're looking at now, I agree with Commissioner Stewart, you know, whether they can come up with, you know, a solution. They seem amicable to creating a solution. So I guess, you know, for this meeting, maybe they weren't able to do that quickly enough, but maybe, you know, work with staff to come up with a different solution. Because, I mean, again, it's, you know, from the rear, it reads, you know, it's like a three-story structure, and again, that's from the rear. But, you know, I understand the want for the use of space. But the dormer, I just echo everything Commissioner Stewart just said about that dormer. So just a different solution for that, you know, and then maybe still having at least, you know, some of the space you want, at least, you know. I hope you can get to that point.
Okay, wait.
It is, it's important to note the date of construction of some of the examples given, some of the surrounding houses, and the data that the guidelines were approved and put into place. I can't speak to, I have enough knowledge to know that, but I certainly don't have objection to either the comments that have been made in terms of roof form. It is challenging to reconcile those two things together architecturally.
So can I get a motion? If not, more discussion?
I do stand at it.
Okay.
I adopt to, I recommend that we adapt, adopt, the staff, we approve it with the conditions for five oh three Buchanan Street.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, all opposed? Motion carries. All right, thirty-seven oh seven Richland Avenue.
Pleasure.
Okay, thirty-seven oh seven Richland Avenue is a historic Craftsman style house, circa nineteen twenty-five, give or take, with a stone veneered first story and a complex roof form with hips, gables, and dormers, with shingle siding and the upper story gable fields. It's got exposed rafter tails and decorative knee braces, all typical features of the Craftsman style. The form of the house is intact, the historic form is intact, and the house contributes to the historic character of the neighborhood. And the applicant wants to create additional upper story by demolishing the roof of the house in its entirety, the primary, secondary roof slopes and dormers, to construct a new roof that is taller with a steeper pitch, and to enlarge the house with a rear addition. Here's another picture of the house from more front on, and a close shot from just off to the right. Unlike a side gabled house where you can extend the front slope of the roof, much like this podium, just extend the front slope up and increase the height. Doing that on a front gabled house, you know, is adding. In order to do, to increase the height of the hip roof in the manner the applicant is proposing is demolition. It is a demolition of the roof, it's a demolition of the upper story, and demolition is not appropriate. Here's a, can I skip by? Okay, here's a picture of the existing, or a drawing, I should say, of the existing house as built on the left, and what would be proposed by the applicant on the right. Increasing the roof pitch from five and a half, twelve, six, twelve, five and a half, increasing it to seven and a half, twelve, which increases the height of the house by two feet. But, I mean, it's not just an addition. It obviously requires demolition in order to do that. Of course, demolition is not appropriate. The guidelines tell you that demolition of a major portion of a building is not appropriate if the portion is of such architectural or historical interest that its removal would be detrimental. And of course, as a contributing structure, the roof is a very important part of the historic house. Worded differently, but the guidelines also have a section on when guideline, or when demolition is appropriate. And this demolition does not meet that criteria, criteria, because if a building or major portion of a building does not contribute to the historic or architectural character, then demolition may be appropriate. And of course, the roof contributes to the character of the house, and the house contributes to the character of the district. Here's the side elevation. It's a little washed out, but you've certainly seen the printed forms. So demolish the roof and add a new taller, steeper roof, and add a rear addition. Apart from the demolition not being appropriate, staff finds that the addition would not be sufficiently separated from the house. Typically, additions are required to step in from the rear of a house where they attach. This addition would line up flush with the rear wall. There is a side bay on, or there are bays on each side of the house. So where it attaches isn't the widest part of the house, but where it attaches at the rear corner of the house, the addition would not step in. In addition to not stepping in, they'd be matching materials, so there's really obliterating any distinction between the original historic house and an addition. And of course, in not stepping in, also the roof form would be changed as well, where there's a rear hip on the house. The hip bridge would be essentially blown out into a gable. It's a pretty significant change to a historic house as an addition. Sort of not even thinking of it as a demolition. It would be an inappropriate addition. There's a photo, or another photo, why I'm saying that. It's the drawing of the rear existing and proposed. And then the other side, the left side of the, sorry, the right side of the house, where that image from the driveway was taken. And you can see that increases the pitch and height of the house and adds on to the rear in a way that staff does not find to be appropriate. And as an addition, it's not appropriate. Addition should be situated at the rear in a way that did not disturb the front or sides. You know, we consider the front slope and side slopes of the roof to be important features of the house's silhouette, to be parts of the front and sides. And certainly, demolishing the roof is an impact of the front or sides. Contemporary designs for additions are not discouraged when additions do not destroy historical, architectural, cultural materi, excuse me, material. Certainly, this demolishes significant historical, architectural material. A new addition should be constructed in such a manner that the addition could be removed in the future, leaving the essential form and integrity of the house intact. There was an applicant earlier, the first case, that talked about an addition to the house being able to be broken off. And that's what we mean by that. If the addition were to be removed, if somebody wanted to restore the house to its original condition, doing, what you're doing to it today wouldn't preclude that from happening. And staff finds that this addition, certainly removing the roof, blurring the line between new and old by not stepping in the addition, we find that it does not meet that design guideline. Staff finds that the demolition is not appropriate, and the addition does not meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposal to demolish the original upper story at thirty-seven oh seven Richland Avenue and to construct a new, taller, upper story and rear addition, finding that the proposal is an inappropriate demolition and addition under Section Three B two, three, B one A, and to not meet the criteria of an appropriate demolition under Sections Three B two A or Three B two B. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposal to construct a rear addition, finding the proposal to not meet the following, the other following sections of the guidelines. Two B one A height, two B one B scale, two B one E roof shape, and two B two A and D, which are pertaining to additions. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions? All right, thank you, Sean.
The applicant is here.
Okay, applicant, please come forward, state your case, and please give us your name and address.
My name is Dan Upstutter. My address is twelve eleven Sixteenth Avenue South. The applicant is actually my son, that's Alex Upstutter. We are here today because this is a relatively small, one-story bungalow house. Before I get started, we had, the applicant had responded to the staff's recommendations, and we sent that over. I don't know if you all provided a copy of that or not. Sometimes writing things explains things better than you're speaking to them. Thrust of this was to expand this, so you could have some living area upstairs. We currently have, it's, I measured it, so I know what it is. It's a six, twelve roof, because I went up in the attic and took my level and took my measurements. And for a lawyer, that's not something we do every day. And so when I put out the measurements, then I gave Alex the math, the math, the math size. And in his first life, he had done double, double majored mathematics, intellectual engineering, so he was able to do the calculations that I couldn't think of it. This isn't their, him and his wife's and child's idea of their forever home. At this point in their life, I don't know how you can just know it's your forever home, but I'll concede to that with gray hair. But to make it forever home and to have, hopefully, more than one grandson, we've got to have more space. And we're trying to stay within the character of the home. We didn't want a big massive addition on the back. We're very purist about that. But we've got to have some living space upstairs to make it work. If we had knocked off, if the original house, the original house was about sixteen hundred square feet. During World War II, they hipped out and tied in. And the house is thirty, forty years of no improvements. I mean, it's version from the standpoint that, you know, we had, I guess the best way to give away, that when the house was appraised, for him to borrow money on it, they gave a total value of the house value at twenty thousand dollars and were only giving it three thousand dollars had it not been for the stone. We've got complete electrical, HVAC, plumbing. The lady before us had kept animals in there, not letting them out. It's been four months since she died. We've fumigated it, we've had the windows open. All the flooring's going to have to come out. So it's a pretty extensive renovation, a pretty expensive renovation. It's very difficult to do if we can't get some living area upstairs. The regulations permit a two-foot ridge raise. I don't know if the regulations contemplated how that would be done or not done. It doesn't say yes or no, but it contemplates, we're not asking for something, an exception. We're asking for what's permitted, a two-foot ridge raise. We're putting back all the same architectural fixtures that are on there right now. If you look at the pictures, the front's the same, the sides, it's just that back part. A couple of dormers were added on each side in the upper level, and you squared off the back. The addition of the back was only twelve feet, because bungalow houses and arts and crafts houses had a backyard, maybe not for what we do today, but they had gardening. It was a different style era. We're trying to stay very, very purist. The roof we're asking for is right next door to the house we're at. We're at thirty-seven oh seven, thirty-seven oh nine, has an eight-twelve. It has the height. It's not, it doesn't have that squared off in the back. But I don't think, when you look at this house from the front, you can see the pictures of Jim Dunn of Benish Mill Works Ridge. It's not a, it's not a massive addition, but we've got to have it, have the space upstairs. You know, we've got pretty significant uphill climb, because this is going to take a major amount of money to restore the house. A lot of people would question whether it's even worth it to restore the house. But, you know, clearly, if we don't get living space upstairs, it's not. I'll have him add to it. I mean, you know, son may want dad to talk, but I thought son, he could do just as fine as I could do.
Alex Upstutter, forty oh two B Illinois Avenue. I mean, I think you did a pretty good job explaining it.
Do you mind, just because it has to be recorded? Thank you.
It's a very large addition. Yeah, I mean, without getting more square footage somewhere. I mean, I know you don't want a house behind a house. That's clear. So without getting more square footage somewhere else, it might not be worth even doing. Not, I mean, we want to preserve this house, like you said. We want to add back every architectural detail that we're ripping off. I mean, the exposed rafter tails, everything would be reproduced just at a different angle. And I mean, the guidelines, they do state that it's most appropriate for, what if, the side hip? What? Side gable. Mix those up. But it says most appropriate for, it doesn't say that you can't do it anywhere else. So, I mean, I don't know if this is more of an exception to the rule. The rule doesn't say that you can't do it, so. Yeah, I mean, be interested to see what y'all think. And then again, with the rear addition, we're fine stepping it in a foot on the left rear corner. On the right rear corner, it's already stepped in four feet. Just to distinguish it, we could also use a different material to distinguish the back addition. You could, what is it? Hip, hip the back, so it matches that hip on the front. That's more aesthetically pleasing. And there are a couple of things we could do, but in terms of that height, the two feet within the guidelines is really, really necessary. Yeah, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Can I add one more thing? We're still with our ten minutes. When the people before us, at some point in that last, I don't know, hundred years, I know that the house was there in nineteen twenty because it's on the D, they clipped all the rafter tails in order to put gutters on them. And originally, when we thought about this, we were going to put, replace them with copper gutters. Then you started looking at houses of that time period. Didn't have gutters. They had the gutter, they put it to foundation where they put the brick, and that's what we would do. So there'd be no gutters on it. So you'd have the full rafter tail exposed now that you only have a half of rafter tail now. But unfortunately, I was in a different time period, and I always thought you had to have gutters. And I realized there were no gutters on arts and crafts houses. And then when I started looking at how to get rid of the water, they had built those into the ground with brick and stuff, which I thought was a pretty good idea. I don't know why we don't do it now. Now, that's part of the problem we got with this house. The gutters have been gone, the best we can tell, thirty or forty years. And that water has literally poured down and poured down and poured down on the foundation. So it's a challenge, so that we are asking simply to be allowed to do a ridge raise. I know it sounds like you're tearing off something historically, that's historical materials. The house next door is the same eight-twelve pitch. We're putting it back for the front, exactly the way it looks now. Other than, the pitch will be adjusted and the height will be adjusted, both of which are currently permitted in your guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open up public hearing. Well, first, I'm sorry, do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, okay, thank you. Open up public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Carter G. Baker. I live at thirty-seven oh eight Richland Avenue, which is right across the street from this particular house. And I've lived there since nineteen seventy, so I've seen a lot come and go in the neighborhood, of course. Coincidentally, the last owners that he referred to, and there were maintenance problems, I'll certainly agree, lived, they bought their house, the house of my, across the street from where my late wife and I street from where my late wife and I now lived and now I live, they bought it the same year and, in fact, the same month that we did. I'm here, though, to request that you follow the recommendations of your staff and not allow the roof to be raised. Conservation zoning in Richland West End area and neighborhood has been in place for 24 years and it has always provided a street facade protection. That's basically all that it's done, and it's been quite successful at that. As a board, I might point out, you all have approved the demolition of three houses in the neighborhood that I know of, and I know the owners were discussing demolition as a possibility. Well, when you did approve that demolition, which occurred at 3720 and 3726 Richland and at 3725 Central, you, when you did allow that, you required the front of the house to be reconstructed exactly as it is, as it was. The most recent one of these on Richland was 3726, where we had a one-story house, the entire thing was taken down, rebuilt exactly like it is with an addition in the back. This is what I'm asking that you do, is that you do what your staff require or recommended and maintain a street facade. Any questions? Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? So you are allowed to rebuttal. I wasn't watching your time, but if you, I'll give you 30-second rebuttal or so if you need it.
I don't think anybody's missed anything. It's just, it's a matter of opinion.
Um, well, just, I please.
I need you to trade.
If you would, if you stop, you done, I would say if you do, please be at the podium. Okay, thank you. Closed public hearing, discussion.
So this is one of our most valued and visible historic neighborhoods with a phenomenal amount of integrity in the architecture. And I can applaud the applicant's desire to replace this house with one that looks like it was built at exactly the same time, but we are charged to follow the guidelines set forth by the Department of the Interior and supported by all the historic preservation groups across the country. And those guidelines do not support recreating the past and trying to create a new house that looks exactly like it would have looked had it been built back in the 20s. And so what we are, what we're faced with here is a couple of violations of what we're charged with, and, you know, one of the things that we look at is for the addition to look different. On the house that the neighbor talked about, the back addition looks totally different. The one that we approved earlier today, the addition could be removed and the original structure would be intact just as it was historically. So this is not an application that I could support and I have to agree with the staff recommendation on this one.
Yeah, this one's really just a non-starter for me. I mean, the, you know, while we all understand the need for space and you want to live in it, I mean, you know, you bought a small craftsman house and it's in a historic district and that's, if we'll, you know, I mean, the reason that we get very interesting additions and, you know, back structures and everything is because you can't tear the roof off of the historic structure and the historic integrity of the home. So I just, I also agree with Commissioner Stewart and the staff recommendation on this for disapproval.
You got a motion? Or do you have?
Just another backup to that because I know the applicants have given, you know, their personal reasons about it and we can approve, you know, we can appreciate that. And again, the Secretary of Interior, we are, our guidelines are quite plain and I think clear, maybe, not plain, but where, yeah, they're not always plain, but our interpretation of, but what is clear in the guidelines is that when you significantly alter the historic structure and architecture, then, you know, that's compromised. So that is the, that's our baseline right there. So I think I agree also with the other commissioners.
Want to make your motion?
Yes. So as in reference to 3707 Richland Avenue, our board has, I'm recommending to, of the staff recommendation, to disapprove the proposal to demolish the original upper story and also disapprove the proposal to construct a rear addition per the design guidelines listed on the recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We did have to have one break. It is, we have been going for two hours. Do we need to, any more to break? Okay, why don't we just do a quick 10-minute break or recess?